I think he says on the sides. I think. What would you?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 11th, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting. It being about 7:00 PM, we're going to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, great. I don't think we have anyone here for citizens input, but do we have anything in? Okay, all right, great. Our public hearing is at 7:05, so I think we're going to just wait on that one for a second. And actually, Kim, since you're here, do you mind if we go to Wormtown? Just because we have to wait for 7:05 for Foxborough Mandarin. And I know that you've had a one-day license before, and you're a licensed liquor holder now, so we're going to move to the one-day liquor license for Wormtown. Can you hear us okay, Kim? All right, we can't hear you, so if you can just give us one second.
I'm unmuted.
Are you muted or are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you are. Okay, great, Kim. All right, now we can hear you perfect. So this one's a little bit different, since Wormtown is a licensed establishment here in town with a farmer's porridge license. So you can just, can you just explain to us a little bit about what you're doing with this license?
Sure. Patriot Place is actually hosting a Harvest Fest, and it's sponsored by Ocean Spray. So they asked us to participate and set up over by the Cranberry Bob over behind Bass Pro Shops. So we are going to bring one to two staff members over. We're going to pour our, it's called Mass Mule, and we're going to add the Ocean Spray cranberry juice to it. It's going to be from noon to four for our portion. The Harvest Fest actually goes from 10:00 to four. So all our staff that goes over, they are all tips trained, and they know how to use that tip certification to make sure that guests are not being over served. They're also only going to be pouring about two ounces per customer.
Okay, great. So it's more of like a sampling than, than a full beer? Okay, great. I looked through your application, and everything seemed pretty clear to me. Did anyone on the board have any questions for Kim from Wormtown?
No, look very complete.
No? Okay, so we're just going to be serving some samples on a different area right, right in the premises. So with that, I don't think we have any more questions, so I think we're ready for a motion, Dennis, if you're...
Okay, motion to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Wormtown Brewery on October 15th from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM for Harvest Fest at One Bass Pro Drive.
Second.
I don't think there's any further discussion. All those in favor?
All right.
All right, wonderful. Thanks, Kim. Sounds like a great event. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too, thanks. All right. We're probably close enough on the public hearing to start that. Those of you that are from Foxborough Mandarin, we do have to read the public hearing notice, but just in the one or two moments before 7:05, can you just say something and we'll make sure we can hear you okay?
My name is Attorney Russell Chin. I'm here representing the applicant.
All right, it looks like you guys are on mute, if you can just make sure we can hear you.
Yep. Can you hear me right now?
Yep, and you guys can hear us okay, right? Mr. Beck, do you mind just turning it up just a little bit? Maybe it's my ears, but it's a little, a little faint for me.
No, it is.
Okay. All right, so we just have to read the public hearing notice, and then we'll have you introduce yourselves and let us know what we're doing. So just give us a moment to open this public hearing.
Yeah, you just need to read this. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, beginning at 7:05 PM in the gala meeting room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of a transfer of license of an on-premises annual all-alcohol beverages license from Foxborough Mandarin, Inc., doing business as Foxborough Mandarin, 10 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Mass, to Asian Fifan Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Foxborough Mandarin, Feijing, General Manager. All interested parties are welcome.
All right, great. So the public hearing is now open. If you can just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the application that is in front of us. We do, we do have it here for the transfer of liquor license along with the common vic and entertainment application.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you.
Just, sorry, you're still just... Paul, can you turn it up a little bit?
That's as high as it goes.
That's as high as it goes, okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
You can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just stay near your speaker. Yes, thanks.
I'll try to keep my voice up.
Yes, perfect. That was much better.
All right. My name is Attorney Russell Chin. The firm is Chin Law Firm in Quincy, Massachusetts, for the record, and I'm here representing the applicant, Asian Fifan Restaurant, Inc. The two principals and all the officers and directors before you as well, Ms. Jialin Jung is here, and Mr. Fei Jung is next to her on the screen. We are here before you seeking, as you mentioned, approval for the transfer of a liquor license at an existing restaurant as well as a new CV license. The applicant proposes to conduct business at 10 Foxborough Boulevard, which is currently the home of the Foxborough Mandarin. I think I lost visual of you, but can you still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Chin.
Okay. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Both of the applicants before you, individuals, have serve-safe licenses. Ms. Jung has an allergy awareness certificate. Mr. Jung has the anti-choke training. And again, we're here to answer any question that you might have.
Okay, great. I do have a couple of questions, but do you guys want to go first and see if it covers?
No.
The only thing I happened to notice on the application, it looks like, you know, you guys have the serve-safe training, but maybe having an alcohol license in your name is new. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience serving alcohol that you have?
Before the answer, I know that Ms. Jung has experience as a waitress in several restaurants, serving alcohol as a server. I would refer to them to give you further information about their experience in terms of alcohol serving, if they could speak up themselves. Ms. Jung, Mr. Jung?
She's, she's the manager of records, so I think we'd like to hear from her.
Ms. Jung, can you speak, can you speak to your experience serving alcohol?
Yes. First, we need to check the ID, and then make, make sure the people age is over the 20, 21 years old. And then it doesn't matter how old is he look like, and then we still need to check the ID. Yeah. The first things we need to make sure, yeah.
Okay, great. And you said that you have taken the serve-safe training. Is that something new or something you had done before as a, as a waitress?
Yes. Yes, we do not, I do not before, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. All right, and, you know, for, for anyone to answer, so the, the name will stay the same, but the ownership of the restaurant is changing at some point in time in the future.
That's correct.
Okay. And we ask all of our liquor applicants if you've heard of Foxcrows, Foxcares, which is a self-restaurant association here in town that, that share best practices. So if you haven't already been in touch with them, we recommend you get in touch with Tom, who is the general manager over at Tavalino at Patriot Place, and he can probably get you on the list and make sure you have that information as well.
I'll make sure that that happens.
Okay. Any other questions before we see if anyone in the public has any?
I just have one quick comment. I also serve alcohol. What I am seeing a lot all of a sudden is that younger people are coming in, they don't have their licenses on them anymore. They have a picture of them on their phone. I guess they're not carrying wallets, and now you can pay with your phone and stuff. So I would just maybe, just as a new alcohol license owner, just keep in mind that they actually have to be showing you an actual ID. I don't know, I just, all of a sudden, I'm seeing it.
You can alter a picture, so you can't accept that, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. And, you know, and the way the kids are coming in, it's almost like other places are accepting it. Like, they're looking at me when I say, no, I need to see an ID. They're like, well, this is my ID. So just, just something I'm seeing, just to maybe be aware, especially since you're, you know, obviously you've been...
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. I don't think we have anyone here for citizens input, but do we have anything? In, okay, all right, great. Our public hearing is at seven oh five, so I think we're gonna just wait on that one for a second. And actually, Kim, since you're here, do you mind if we go to Wormtown? Just because we have to wait for seven oh five for Foxborough Mandarin. And I know that you've had a one day license before. And you're a licensed liquor holder now, so we're gonna move to the one day liquor license for Wormtown. Can you hear us okay, Kim? All right, we can't hear you, so if you can just give us one second. Are you muted or are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you are. Okay, great, Kim. All right, now we can hear you perfect. So this one's a little bit different since Wormtown is a licensed establishment here in town with a farmer's pourer's license. So you can just, can you just explain to us a little bit about what you're doing with this license?
Sure, Patriot Place is actually hosting a Harvest Fest and it's sponsored by Ocean Spray. So they asked us to participate and set up over by the Cranberry Bob over behind Bass Pro Shops. So we are gonna bring one to two staff members over. We're gonna pour our, it's called Mass Mule, and we're gonna add the Ocean Spray cranberry juice to it. It's gonna be from noon to four for our portion. The Harvest Fest actually goes from ten to four. So all our staff that goes over, they are all tips trained and they know how to use that tip certification to make sure that guests are not being over served. They're also only gonna be pouring about two ounces per customer.
Okay, great. So it's more of like a sampling than than a full beer. Okay. Great. I looked through your application and everything seemed pretty clear to me. Did anyone on the board have any questions for Kim from Wormtown?
No, look very complete.
Okay, so we're just gonna be serving some samples on a different area right in the premises. So with that, I don't think we have any more questions, so I think we're ready for a motion, Dennis, if you're...
Okay, motion to approve a one day beer and wine license for Wormtown Brewery on October fifteenth from eleven AM to seven PM for Harvest Fest at one Bass Pro Drive.
Second.
I don't think there's any further discussion. All those in favor? All right, wonderful. Thanks, Kim. Sounds like a great event. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks. All right, we're probably close enough on the public hearing to start that. Those of you that are from Foxborough Mandarin, we do have to read the public hearing notice, but just in the one or two moments before seven oh five, can you just say something and we'll make sure we can hear you okay?
My name is Attorney Russell Chin. I'm here representing the applicant.
All right, it looks like you guys are on mute. If you can just make sure we can hear you.
Yep. Can you hear me up right now?
Yep, and you guys can hear us okay, right? Mr. Beck, do you mind just turning it up just a little bit? Maybe it's my ears, but it's a little faint for me.
No, it is.
Okay. All right, so we just have to read the public hearing notice and then we'll have you introduce yourselves and let us know what we're doing. So just give us a moment to open this public hearing. Yeah, you just need to...
The Board of Selectment, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, beginning at seven oh five PM in the gala meeting room, Town Hall, Forty South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on the application of a transfer of license of an on-premises annual all alcohol beverages license from Foxborough Mandarin Inc. doing business as Foxborough Mandarin, ten Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Mass, to Asian Fifen Restaurant Inc. doing business as Foxborough Mandarin, Feijiang General Manager. All interested parties are welcome.
All right, great. So the public hearing is now open. If you can just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the application that is in front of us. We do, we do have it here for the transfer of liquor license along with the common vic and entertainment application.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you.
Just, sorry, you're still just... Paul, can you turn it up a little bit? That's as high as it goes, okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
You can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just stay near your speaker. Yes, thanks.
I'll try to keep my voice up.
Yes, perfect. That was much better.
All right. My name is Attorney Russell Chin. The firm is Chin Law Firm in Quincy, Massachusetts, for the record. And I'm here representing the applicant, Asian Fifen Restaurant Inc. The two principals and all the officers and directors before you as well. Miss Jialing Jung is here and Mr. Fei Jung is next to her on screen. We are here before you seeking, as you mentioned, approval for the transfer of a liquor license and an existing restaurant as well as a new CV license. The applicant proposes to conduct business at ten Foxborough Boulevard, which is currently the home of the Foxborough Mandarin. I think I lost visual of you, but can you still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Chin.
Okay. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Both of the applicants before you individuals have serve safe licenses. Miss Jung has allergy awareness certificate. Mr. Jung has the interchop training. And again, we're having a certain question that you might have.
Okay, great. I do have a couple of questions, but do you guys wanna go first and see if it covers?
No.
The only thing I happened to notice on the application, it looks like, you know, you guys have the serve safe training, but maybe having an alcohol license in your name is new. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience serving alcohol that you have?
Before the answer, I know that Miss Jung has experience as a waitress in several restaurants, serving alcohol as a server. I would refer to them to give you further information about their experience in terms of alcohol serving. If they could speak up themselves. Mr. Jung, Mr. Jung?
Sir.
She's the manager of records, so I think we'd like to hear from her.
Miss Jung, can you speak, can you speak to your experience serving alcohol?
Yes, for the first, we need to check the ID and then make sure the people age is over the twenty, twenty-one years old. And then it doesn't matter how old is he look like, and then we still need to check the ID, yeah. The first things we need to make sure, yeah.
Okay, great. And you said that you have taken the serve safe training. Is that something new or something you had done before as a waitress?
Yes. Yes, we do not, I do not before, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. All right, and, you know, for anyone to answer, so the name will stay the same, but the ownership of the restaurant is changing at some point in time in the future.
That's correct.
Okay. And we ask all of our liquor applicants if you've heard of Foxcrows, Foxcares, which is a self-restaurant association here in town that share best practices. So if you haven't already been in touch with them, we recommend you get in touch with Tom, who is the general manager over at Tavallino at Patriot Place. And he can probably get you on the list and make sure you have that information as well.
I'll make sure that that happens.
Okay. Any other questions before we see if anyone in the public has any?
I just have one quick comment. I also serve alcohol. What I am seeing a lot all of a sudden is that younger people are coming in, they don't have their licenses on them anymore. They have a picture of them on their phone. I guess they're not carrying wallets and now you can pay with your phone and stuff. So I would just maybe, just as a new alcohol license owner, just keep in mind that they actually have to be showing you an actual ID. I don't know, I just, all of a sudden, I'm seeing it.
You can alter a picture, so you can accept that, yeah.
Exactly. And, you know, and the way the kids are coming in, it's almost like other places are accepting it. Like, they're looking at me when I say, no, I need to see an ID. They're like, well, this is my ID. So just, just something I'm seeing, just to maybe be aware, especially since you're, you know, obviously you've been serving, but that the fact, now that the liquor license is in your name, that ups the responsibility just a little bit more. So just something I happen to be seeing the last, like, three or four weeks, just to keep in mind, make sure that it's always an actual ID that they're showing you.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, really interesting.
Okay, I don't think anyone's here from the public for this. Anyone? No? Okay. All right, and no comments. Christina in advance, right? All right, so with that, I think we're gonna close the public hearing next. It's just something we have to do. And then we'll take two separate motions, one for the alcohol license and then one for the common vic and entertainment.
Great. Motion to close the public meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the transfer of an on-premise all alcohol beverage license from Foxborough Mandarin Inc. doing business as Foxborough Mandarin to Asian Fifen, doing business as Foxborough Mandarin.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
In motion to approve a common vicular and entertainment license for Asian Fifen, doing business as Foxborough Mandarin.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, wonderful. Welcome to town. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We actually have your neighbor, we have your neighbor up next, too Bangkok Cafe, who's on the agenda if you wish to stick around at all.
Thirty years.
For thirty years in business, so. All right, great. And you're welcome to stay if you want. Just letting you know, we have your neighbor on here. So Danny and Todd, if you guys wanna come up next and take a seat at the table? So we are here to honor an amazing thirty years in business for Bangkok Cafe. They did have a celebration over the weekend, which they graciously invited us to. But due to conflicts, we weren't able to make it, so we had invited them to be here to celebrate this important, important moment. So as we're getting started, a lot of people know I grew up in town, so I was kind of reminiscing with Danny and Todd about how Bangkok Cafe has really been an anchor of that plaza that has transformed so much. So, you know, back from when you guys were on the other, people may not even remember, they were on the other side where the gym is and up to this new space. It's just been an amazing journey. So with that, would you guys mind just telling us a little bit about the celebration you had? About the thirty years, anything you have to reflect on?
Yeah, because it's a long memory, thirty years, three decades, yeah. And then we had invited the old landlord, Harvey Smith, to come and he came, he did came.
Amazing.
Yeah, he's so true because, you know, in the part of the beginning, he's helping, you know, all, you know. So he treats me like family, you know, not like a businessman, you know. So he really faithful and he really, you know, adoring, yeah.
Yeah, that's what community business is all about, you know, those great partnerships.
And back then, in the, in the whole plaza, we we are really friendly, you know, you know, we offering things and talking to each other, you know, to that, you know. Even now, too, we still, you know, even the neighbor, you know, so we still, you know, exchange an idea, talking, you know, and, you know.
Say hello to your new neighbor.
Yeah, there's your new neighbor. Yeah. So, you know, it's just, the plaza has had so much transformation and, you know, you guys being there the whole time and, you know, it's just, I know I want Thai this week. I already said, you know, I think we're gonna get it tomorrow now.
It came last week.
I was here the other day, absolutely.
Drunken noodles are my favorite, but not too spicy.
Yeah. And next time, I was just talking to Todd, that next time you come in, I would like you to, honor you to sign my board because we have the board. You know, so the customer, the customer get able to signing something for, you know, our memory thirty years. So we kept it on the side of the, at the door, when you walk in, you open, you see on the lap, we have the marker. So the people, even today, the people walk in and they look at it, say, thirty years? You know, and they say, okay, can I sign this something? Said, yes, absolutely, please do, you know, so, yeah. It really be great honor.
What made you pick Foxborough initially?
It's a long story, too. Long story, too, you know, because, you know, back then, and I get connection to the, to one of the broker Lee Max in Foxborough. You know, and then she's the one who hooked me up, you know, to this place. And then when they came in to, you know, to see Harvey.
And the transformation has been, has been amazing from what it was to what the plaza is.
And, you know, thirty years ago, nobody knew about Thai food around here because it's suburb area. So even we opened the Thai restaurant, so, you know, thirty years ago, nobody know what is the Thai food. So they thought it's spicy.
Yeah.
Indian food, you know, is spicy, but they said, no, we, we don't have, we have something spicy, not spicy. But the other thing is, the thing is, it's healthy food.
Yes.
You know, it's healthy, it's light, you know, it's not heavy and ingredient is fresh, you know, and, you know, and all the spice is good for your soul and your body.
Yeah. You're doing something right. Thirty years is a long time. We were kind of reflecting on all the businesses that have been around for a long time. And, you know, time sure flies. I can't believe it's been thirty years since.
Yeah, it's a story, too. Back then, when I start talking to Harvey, he asked me, when just about to talking about the lease term and the agreement, he asked me, oh, how long, how long do you want to be on the lease? I said, thirty years. He said, Danny, why you, why you want thirty years? I said, well, because I learned from, when I was working with my old boss, he always said that if you, when you want to buy or sell something, the business, if you had the long lease, so it motivate the buyer to buy. If you have six month, one year, two year, it's not worth it because in the future, the landlord might kick you out or they don't want to renew your lease. So I told him that. I said, what about if you are tired, if you want, if you bored and you cannot make it, you stuck with me, you know, for thirty years. You know what I mean? So he said, oh, instead of that thirty years, so why don't we start two year first and let's see how is it? You know, you're able to make it or, you know, and one past two year, he come in and sneaking in and then he always teasing me all the time. You, you get bored yet? You want, you, you, you know, they says, no, I'm still, you know, I really like enjoy it. So keep, keep, you know, working, working, working.
That's amazing. It really is, wow.
My only comment is that I met Danny twenty-five years ago on October nineteenth. And when we first met, I asked him what he did. He said, I own a restaurant. I said, how long? He said, five years. I said, oh my God, that's an eternity.
In the restaurant, yeah.
I mean, most of them disappear after a year or two. And now we just celebrated our twenty-fifth anniversary and thirty of the restaurant, and it's been an amazing ride.
I love that story. It's just amazing. You guys are definitely staples in town.
Just as a note to guys, you know, I travel all over the country, a lot of country, the state, got a lot of friends, chiropractic friends throughout the state. And as big as Patriot's Place is and all the restaurants we have, would be surprised how many people say one of the best Thai restaurants they've ever been to is that Bangkok Cafe out on the other side of Foxborough.
Yeah, when, when we transfer from the old restaurant to the new restaurant, it took me four months to rebuild the new one. So I thought I will, I will lost all my, all my old customer because they're all gonna go out somewhere and then they will, we will not come back. But all of them, they come back and they told me, said, you know what? We sneak, we went to different restaurant, Thai restaurant because we like Thai food, so we went to different, you know, somewhere. And they said, you are the best, so that's why we come back.
Yeah, and I mean, think about that hurdle right there, the fact you guys had to close for a couple of months. Do that, yeah, do that major, which in the long run, I'm sure you're glad you had the new space and everything. But still, what an amazing hurdle to get over, you know, amongst everything else with pandemic. You know, so it just really is amazing. So we wanted to make sure that we could congratulate you guys on an amazing, an amazing journey.
Yeah, and I'm a newcomer to town, but I've been there with my wife. It's terrific. It's clean, service is outstanding, and the food is terrific. So that's somebody new to town, you know, so.
I travel two hundred thousand miles a year. I work at MIT in the administration. It's my real job. And I go to restaurants all over the world, literally in six of the seven continents. There's nothing like it. Just incredible.
And another thing to comment, the customer commented, oh my God, your restroom is so nice and clean.
That's what my mother told me when I was young. She said, when you go in a restaurant, if the restroom's clean, it's a good restaurant.
Yeah, she did came to my restaurant.
She gave her the thumbs up, yeah. All right, great. Well, we do have a citation for you guys, and I think we would like to take a picture. So I won't read through the whole thing, but I'll give some highlights. So Bangkok Cafe has provided an authentic and memorable Thai cuisine experience and nourished the community with fresh ingredients for three decades. Your continued perseverance in the transformation of Forbes Crossing has been a positive impact on the community and the development. And we just want to celebrate you with your friends and family on your extraordinary thirty years.
Thank you.
All right, great. So we're gonna grab a quick picture?
If I could get you to just do an iPhone pic when?
You know, why don't we come right in front of the town? Christina does a great job. All right, thanks again. Thank you so much. I'll see you guys tomorrow night. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Almost comes back to the pad thai.
Yeah, what do you, what do you say is the best dish?
Absolutely.
Pad thai?
Ties, hands down, favorite. It is. I'm on a low carb diet.
Okay.
Try the science sizzler.
Okay.
It's beef and or shrimp and or chicken, and it's amazing little spicy sauce.
Ooh, okay.
And no carbs.
Oh, perfect. All right.
So I'll get rice on the side.
Thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it. All right, great. And now we are just full of good news tonight. Now we have the Condon Brothers up next. You guys can come on up. All right. So in other good news, I think you all know how passionate we are, we all are about Uptown. And I think everyone has probably noticed the transformation of the Condon building with the painting and everything. So if you guys can introduce yourselves and just tell us a little bit about what you did recently that just makes that building so beautiful that we have this lovely award here for you guys for Uptown Beautification.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Condon.
I'm Scott Condon.
We work at our family business that was started by our grandfather in nineteen twenty-eight, so the third generation. And, yeah, we just take a lot of pride in the business. And we wanted to clean up the property for the business, the benefits of the business, but we also felt a certain responsibility being right on the common to do something tasteful, to add to the already, you know, charming, beautiful common. And we want to do our part the best we could and appreciate the recognition, yeah.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. You know, truly, it was Gary's vision, you know, throughout this whole process, you know. You know, he's had great ideas throughout, you know, the entire time I've been working there. So, you know, I owe appreciation to him for, you know, having this vision and, you know, making it come, come true.
It was his hard work, so.
It must've sounded a little scary to paint the back black, though, at first, right? Was it black at all before or is it just?
Oh, it was white.
It was white, right?
Yeah, we were nervous.
It was a big change and, you know, you know, we kinda...
My wife helped push us over the edge.
Okay, yeah, to get that kind of modern look. And then with the doors, really tied it together.
Just added a lot of warmth.
Yeah.
And not to forget the plants, the little bushes, too.
Yeah, that really pretty one in the back corner.
Yeah, you know, I just, I wanted to add some warmth to the building. I always thought all around the back and the side, it was cold and wanted to do anything we could to try to add some warmth. And we were inspired by the properties that you've done over. Patriot's Place, the landscaping, so we had different inspirations and, yeah, so.
Yeah, a little, little bit goes a long way to make a big difference. And I have to admit, I don't know who's behind the scarecrow, too, or the, like, scary thing that's up on the sign. Oh, we have a picture of it. Do you have a picture of it?
Yep.
I love that bushel back. Yeah, there it is. We even got some Halloween decor going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotta be festive.
Yeah. So I know on Uptown Happenings, they posted that today and splashes decorations and some of the other, some of the other stuff going on uptown. So the pictures, can Mr. Beck put this on TV, too, or just so, okay, there we go. All right, so there's the back with that black that we were talking about that was a risk, but paid off. That beautiful.
That's a bush.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's, it really, I know it's one building, but one building at a time, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I think, I think we're...
Set the tone.
Set the tone, exactly, so.
Maybe it's gonna be contagious and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially with the fire station being revitalized. And then actually, the old post office is gonna become Citizens Bank. I know they put in an application for like a sign. I've heard they might wanna do some painting of that brick, too. I don't know what their exact plan is, but...
And you mentioned Central Street is coming alive, you know, more business coming in.
Yeah, yeah. So with that, I'll probably go into, do you guys mind if I just do the Uptown update real quick, just because you guys are sitting here and you might have some things to say? But the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative meets the first Wednesday of every month, seven thirty AM. I know it's a little tough if you got kids going off to school, but, you know, just for you guys or anyone to try to make that. Shovel Town should be opening hopefully in November, so I think that's gonna be a big difference. The Wall Street Apartments, they actually have a link open for leasing now. So that's gonna come along really, really quickly. There's the Halloween Parade, which is coming up. Tying off of your building looking so nice and the Halloween decor, we're really hoping for a lot for the holidays, too. So we're gonna now have actual lights on the common now that we have the electrical.
I saw that email, yeah.
Yep, so I actually noticed if you drive around to the Foxborough Nutrition Building, it looks like their holiday lights are already up. They're just not on, so, you know, look for those. And then as far as parking, I know you guys have quite a bit of space there, so it probably works out pretty well for you. But there's, there's some new wayfinding signs that were installed, some additional ones that were paid with private donation. And then we are looking at the lot behind your business, that whole, it's called the Veterans Lot, that Central Street Lot. You know, we may be coming to you about like dumpsters, trying to get things placed certain ways so that we just, it's, you know, we don't have a lot of use, a lot of space back there, but people are using it more and more, so how can we maximize that space? And then the lot at the end of Bird Street, which we used to only have forty-four spaces, we now have a hundred and four. So we're trying to do a little bit there to clean that up, make it feel a little bit more inviting. And snow parking overnight, parking will actually be allowed. Seth, I know you're in Bird Street, so you probably feel that a little bit more with neighbors. But people will be able to park there overnight during snowstorms. They do have to move as soon as it's over. But there's a lot of great things that are happening uptown, and I just think, you know, with what you guys have done and, you know, if everyone kinda, kinda follows step and does the same thing, it'll, we'll really start to have a transformation up there.
Absolutely, sure.
All right, anything else before we, we're probably gonna do the same thing, give you guys the award and take a picture?
You guys are Foxborough guys, right?
We are.
Foxborough, huh?
We grew up next door to each other, Gary, was my first friend.
Okay.
In nineteen eighty-six. Yeah, moved in kindergarten. I'm very outgoing. He's not, if you can imagine.
Yeah, we're gonna take a picture in there.
You're gonna see.
Me and I, the first day of kindergarten.
Yep, still looks just like that.
Those socks were rocking back then.
Absolutely.
Prime time. All right, so here's this award for you guys. To display it in your, in your shop. We'll grab a picture. Yeah, we're gonna go over in front of the steal. Christina likes it.
It's all...
It's gonna be right. All right, thanks, guys. I wanna hug you guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Nice to...
And you're still in Foxborough. Gary's still in Foxborough. Scott left us, though, right? Scott?
I would love to come back. You know, we're in Cumberland right now.
Yeah, gotta get back, gotta get back home, right? We all leave for a little bit and come back.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Good to see ya.
All right, so... All right, so, I actually forgot to mention already how Bill isn't here. I'm sure we all noticed by now.
Bill who?
Right, he's already mailing it in now. But I think this is the first meeting I remember him missing. I kind of thought, I don't know if you could think of one.
I don't remember one.
Yes, even when he had COVID, he was home on Zoom, so I guess we let him off sometimes. So you'll notice we're skipping the Town Managers' Update, but we do have Assistant Town Managers' Update, and we have quite a few things for Mike to update us on.
Okay, for starters, let me talk a little bit about some board and committee and commission training. So we have three trainings that are scheduled coming up. We have social media training, and that is on November 2nd, so any board, committee, and commission members out there, please do attend, and our office will be contacting with reminders of that. So that's social media training on November 2nd, then on our electronic communication and computer use policy, we'll be training on November 9th, and then anti-discrimination training on November 30th. All those trainings are in this room from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Additionally, we have some resources that are on the town website, on the boards and committees webpage, and those trainings are the ones that we've previously held and have recorded, and we ask that board, committee, and commission members go on there, review that training, and sign the acknowledgement page and send it into the Town Manager's Office, and those trainings are on civility policy, conducting public meetings, of which we just had one recently for our board and committee and commission chairs, but also we encourage all members to take those trainings. And then the, the third one that's up on that page is workplace violence training, and that is something that we had specifically tailored for our employees, but we feel it's also very appropriate for our board, committee, and commission members as well. So we'd really appreciate, and we'll be chasing down members to please attend those trainings, to sign the acknowledgement forms and send them back in, so that we don't have to chase people down to become compliant with those trainings.
And there is an end time on that training, so we won't hold you there forever, it's 5:30 to 6:30.
Right, 5:30 to 6:30.
And it's available via Zoom as well, so we can't make it in person.
We have people that have responded that they're going to come to, not yet?
We're sending out the email tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, so it's going out tomorrow morning. And one of the things that I did task Mike with is really looking at those boards and commission and committee files before he goes to, just like, especially like civility and some of the big ones, just making sure that we have forms on file for everyone who's on a board, commission, or committee, so if you haven't returned one of those, you know, no, you may, you may hear from us, and, you know, these trainings are great, it's an hour, you know, I encourage especially everyone on our board that maybe hasn't attended one of these yet to either Zoom in or attend in person.
Let's see. The big push for that, and these trainings will be ongoing, but we're really trying to push to get people up to speed and get those training folders up to be, up to speed by the end of December. So again, those trainings that I mentioned are in November, in addition to the three that are on the website, if you'll please tend to those. We have a couple of jobs that are posted, and right now, our, our children's librarian is leaving, she's actually been hired as a, as a library director over in East Bridgewater, and so we have posted that position, and the second position that we have posted is the human resources director, so both of those are ongoing.
And that library, that children's director, that one hasn't been filled that long, right? At least a year yet, or?
She had been there a couple of years.
Oh, she had, well, time flies.
Yes.
Is it the adolescent?
No, not the brand new one, not the teen librarian, that's the part-time position, but the children's librarian, she's been here.
Yeah, she came in and we met her, it felt like not that long ago, but a couple of years, time flies.
Yeah, only two years.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
So she had a, you know, a career opportunity to move into a director position, and she's, you know.
Congrats to her.
Has been impressive here, and we wish her luck in her new position over in East Bridgewater, which interestingly is where our last library director came from.
Oh.
Yeah, Manny, Manny Layton came from East Bridgewater, then came here, and now he's off in Tennessee. A couple of updates for, from DPW, so the West Street dam work has been going on, as you're all aware, it's going, that work is on hold for about two weeks while we wait. National Grid has got some work to do installing poles now that they've cleared the trees and alongside the road, so about two weeks, the, the bridge will be open, construction will not be going on until National Grid does their work, and then, and then the construction work on the, on the bridge will continue. As anyone who's come up and down Mechanic Street has seen, the paving is complete there, and towards the end of this month and the beginning of November, the sidewalk reconstruction will, will take place on Mechanic Street. Let's see.
Did you skip over the insurance experience trend?
So I just wanted to briefly mention, so Bill and I met with our, our MIA underwriter, so MIA is the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, of which Foxborough is a member along with more than half of the 351 communities in the Commonwealth, and last week, we spent a couple of hours with our underwriter reviewing all of our liability policies, and, and it was impressive as we went through, you know, the different policies, so we have workers' comp policy for people who are injured on duty, and then we have 111F or IOD, or injured on duty, injury insurance, that's for our police and fire, our public safety personnel, and then we have comprehensive liability for our buildings, for abandoned buildings, for playgrounds, for turf fields, for everything that the town owns, and somebody could either get hurt on or, or damaged on by, or, you know, we, you know, we have flood insurance, we have, you know, broken pipes, all those sort of things. But as we went through every line of coverage, our experience has come down, so experience is the, the, you know, amount of, a number of claims, you know, and also our severity of claims have come down. So what does that mean? Across all of those different types of insurance, that means that, that our, our premiums also go down, so the better our experience is as a town in having less injuries, less damages, and less severe injuries and damages, that, that is money back in, you know, in the pockets of townspeople. So I just wanted to share that just as, you know, anecdotally, that, that we're, we're trending well, and we have been for a couple of years, but this year was especially well. And I think at some point, we, we may bring Thomas DiPaolo in, so he can talk specifics on some of the best practices that Foxborough is doing really well, and not just in, in the administration, but all across the town. We have a loss control group that meets quarterly, and, and we review best practices, we look at trainings, we look at what are the new things that are coming out. Big ones are cybersecurity and pipe breakages, we're coming up into the winter, so we look at, you know, freezing, we look at, you know, roof leakages, things like that, and I just wanted to share with, with the board and with the public that the town is doing very well in these areas, and as long as we continue to follow best practices and pay attention to taking the trainings and educating our people, that we will continue to do well into the future, and that's good news for all of us, so I just want to share that with everyone.
We're full of good news tonight. I love it.
Well, you know, I mean, on the advisory committee, I followed this for like three years, and now it continues. This is not a fluke, this is very high performance, particularly workers' comp, where your experience mark is low, you know, and so it's just speaks to the relationship of management with the workforce, and the relationship of management with unions, you know, that you, because this is a runaway problem for a lot of towns and cities, you know, the workers' comp situation, how many people are out on disability, and do they ever come back? It's really a significant problem for a lot of municipalities and towns, so, you know, this is something to call out, frankly.
It really is, it's worthwhile, and you just reminded me, when you talk about, you know, labor relations, you know, one, one key area there is that we, Foxborough piloted a program for MIA, so for, you know, for over 170 towns, we were the first in the Commonwealth to pilot a light duty program, so if we've got somebody out on workers' compensation, and, you know, if they've got a severe injury, well, you know, we're, we're without them until they're good enough to come back. But there are cases where somebody's rehabbed enough that they're back to physical therapy or just ongoing, you know, follow-up with the doctor, and they haven't been cleared back to full duty, but they are able to do some work. We were the first in the Commonwealth to, to pilot a couple of years ago, a, a light duty program, and we had agreement from all of our unions that they were willing to do that because they saw the importance in getting these workers back. The longer someone is out, and we saw this during COVID, the harder it is to get them back to work. People want to work, they work here because they want to work, they like working for this town, and so if we can, you know, if they're not quite ready to get back in and drive a truck, maybe there's some paperwork they can do. There's always reports, there's certain things, if they can't look at a computer yet, maybe there's other filing they can do. And we, we found ways in working with MIA in, in having that be a very successful program. It was good for the, for the mental health and well-being of our employees, it was good for the experience level as far as insurance claim and length of time out of work for the town, for our premiums, it was just good all around, and it was good for MIA and the other communities that now have jumped on board with that program. So thank you for reminding me of that, so this is all good news.
And can I also piggyback on, just while you're talking about MIA, it just made me think, I just looked real quick to make sure I had the right name of the program, but if, if you're receiving health benefits from the town, if you work for the town, or someone in your family is a diabetic, they also have a program where, we just started using this about a year ago, Jimmy receives all of his diabetic supplies, his insulin, test strips, you know, the lance sets, anything to do with his diabetes for free, and it's, it's just in case anybody who's received, you know, taking on the town health program and didn't know about this, it's called the MIA Good Health Diabetic Program, and the only thing you have to do is you have to follow, your A1C needs to be checked twice, you have to follow everything that a diabetic, that your doctor wants from you to have, and, which is to have your eyes checked once a year, to make sure your A1C or your blood work is done, I think it's twice a year, but for us, it's a huge savings, you know. Jimmy takes two different types of insulin, that's $50 apiece each month on top of any, anything, anything else, and it's any type of diabetic, whether it's oral medicine, insulins, like I said, equipment, so I, just made me think of it as you were talking about MIA, that if anybody hasn't taken advantage, and somebody who's on the, on our town health and has somebody in the family who's a diabetic, it might be something really you want to look into, so just tagging on what you said, Mike.
That, that's actually a really good point, and reminds me of one other thing, is, you know, we meet several times a year with, with MIA, but also anytime they have something new, whether it's newsworthy, or a, a new technology, or a new program that's coming out, they share that with us, and we share that with all of our employees. Another one of those new programs that came out was related to our, to our dental programs, so, you know, it's known that there are heart conditions and other blood pressure things that can be related to bad oral health, so people that have heart, you know, issues, also diabetes, other things, they can get increased appointments for certain things. So with the, you know, with coronary heart disease, they can get an increased number of dental cleanings over and above what, what everyone else on the policy gets, just because the history shows that with more cleanings, their long-term health is going to be better, and hence the experience of the town is going to be better, and it helps us all out, so thank you for reminding me of that.
Yeah, I'm sure, Christina, I'm sure this is stuff that I know Jimmy and you have combined heads for, for the health fair, and I'm sure a lot of information is out, I just thought about it, that maybe if somebody didn't know, just to mention it, you know, that MIA is a great partner for the town.
They're fantastic, we've had great experience with them.
Yeah.
All right, great, so I think that we'll go into action items. Bernie Lynch is here, and he is in the building, but he's actually meeting remotely with another town from the building, so I think he was trying to make it so he could do two meetings, you know, in one night, and we had put him a little later, so I think we'll move on to the action items and see, and see if he comes in, and then if not, we'll go to selectmen's update, and then we'll have to probably check on where he is. He is here, right? Okay.
Okay. Should I do the motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the November 8, 2022 state election warrant. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're just doing our action items, we were giving you guys another minute, so.
Want us to come up?
Yeah, just come right on up, we're just, we're just heading through five action items quick. We're never this prompt.
I was very impressed.
Motion to approve a bill of $278.04 for economic development domain names from the Economic Development Fund. Second.
And under further discussion, this is money from that Economic Development Fund, the $5,000 from each licorice, and just to remind everyone, this is something Pete has been working on, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Monica Fissler to the Personnel Board for a term to end 5/31/23. Second.
Under further discussion, she is taking Nancy Becher's spot, who has resigned, so all those in favor?
Motion to approve the Suffolk Construction Company off-hours work extension request for the Gillette Stadium North End Zone to continue from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Friday until December 31, 2022, under the conditions set forth by the Foxborough Police Chief and Select Board. Yes.
All right, and just under further discussion, I did ask Chief Grace and Scott Shippey are building in fact, because they are, I think, extended to 10:00 right now, if I'm not mistaken, so I think we're going one hour later, just to make sure we haven't received any complaints from people in Foxborough, from our neighbors in Walpole and Norfolk as well, and there haven't been any, so I think that this seems reasonable, just a little bit of background there. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes. Motion to approve the August 16, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. Second.
Any further discussion on those comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion to approve the September 13, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes. Second.
Any discussion edits? All those in favor? All right, great, thanks for your patience, guys, we were like to the minute on time there.
Right.
It's amazing.
Very impressed.
All right, so if you guys can just reintroduce yourself, Bernie, introduce yourself, and let us know what we're here to discuss tonight on this exciting process. We said this is the first meeting Bill's ever missed, so.
Oh, all the trust.
He's actually not here with us tonight that I can remember, so.
Well, I find that hard to believe, knowing that I was going to be here, that he wouldn't, so. My name is Bernie Lynch with Community Paradigm Associates, working with the town on the search for a new town manager.
And I'm Sharon Flaherty, also with Community Paradigm.
Okay, and I think our, our hope tonight is to receive your feedback on the position statement that we circulated. We had an opportunity to speak to all the members of the board, to the, a number of department heads, we also did a community survey and received some feedback from the public, and all of that, well, maybe not all of that, because some things we sort of hold back, but all of that information will be used by us in trying to find the best possible candidates for the position in terms of our recruiting, and will be used by us as we speak with candidates that either we reach out to or that reach out to us about the position, and all of that information will be used as we assess candidates on our own, so that we can make recommendations to the screening committee that you've appointed, and we can provide that information to screening committee members as we, as they assess candidates. And much of that information, though, is contained within the position statement. You know, we weren't able to put in every single thing we heard, but we think we got the most important, most importantly, we put in everything that you told us, because as the chief executive body of the town, it's most important that you're able to work with the candidate that's chosen, and that you're on the same path to what's appropriate for Foxborough. So that's number one. So that's number one. As part of that discussion, we want to talk about salary. And we've put together some information about salary. What we're going to be providing you, and I'll probably repeat myself in saying this, what we've provided is, you know, information about, I think it's about 35 communities in this survey that we did. Much of it is, or roughly half, are the communities around Foxborough that we think are notable because this is sort of your labor market area. Geography does play a big role in these these searches. You know, it's nice to think that we advertise and we recruit outside the region, but largely people nowadays just sort of commute in from wherever they are. So it's important to know sort of what's going on around you. And there are, you know, there's aspects to that that we'll we can get into when we look at those salaries, including things like hometown discounts. You know, people that are in a position say, okay, I'll give you a little bit, take a little bit less because, you know, I'm not going anywhere, I'm here. And then we've also given you information about current and recent searches that have either chosen someone or are in the process of choosing people. That information is useful because it does tell you a little bit more about what's happening on the ground now, as opposed to that issue of hometown discounts. That extends the geographic area substantially. It goes all the way up to the North Shore, all the way down, doesn't go across the bridge, but it comes right to the bridge. I suppose in one case, it actually is half on this side and half on the other side. And so we'll give you that information where we have it as to what it was advertised at and what the negotiated salaries were. What we haven't included in this is more of the type of information that will become relevant in negotiations, once you reach a candidate that you may not want to talk about now, of aspects. And we can kind of talk about some of these that are in here, but some communities decide they want to put bonuses in, or some communities decide they want to do more on, or candidates decide they want more on deferred comp, or more on a car allowance, or more on professional development, all sorts of. And the, if we tried to put that in a spreadsheet, very frankly, it would be huge. And there'd be so much data that we wouldn't be able really to fully utilize it. But there are, you know, I can I can speak to a number of these ideas that communities have have used, so we can we can talk about that. With that information set, with the salary set, that can be plugged into the position statement. And if we if you give us the go-ahead tonight, which obviously I'm hoping you do tomorrow morning, if not tonight, it will be posted on the Massachusetts Municipal Association website, it'll be posted on the International City and County Management Association website, it'll be posted on the Engaging Local Government Leaders website, and it will be distributed to all members of the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association, as well as our own database of candidates that are out there. And we will begin the search. And then lastly to that, let's start sending around doodle polls to hunt your screening committee members to identify dates that they're available to meet and review the resumes.
Okay.
That's what I got. So, where would you like to start?
Let's start with the position statement. Just a little bit of background on that, we all have received that, everyone's seen that. And we all actually met with Sharon to help develop this. So I think a lot of that discussion, at least for me, was like cultural fit type of stuff and about Foxborough. I mean, I feel like the table stakes that like you need in a candidate are probably similar throughout, you know, the Commonwealth, I assume, you know, as far as experience, education, you know, different qualifications that they want. I think, you know, we are maybe a little bit different with the stadium, but, you know, a lot of that stuff's kind of table stakes. So for me, it was kind of a lot about the culture and the town and what we're looking for. And, you know, we can put that on paper, but I feel like a lot of that will also come out in the interview process. Like, I'd rather hear what someone says than put it on the paper and kind of spew defeat what we're looking for. So, you know, that's kind of my assessment of this, what is it, a five or eight page document? It's it's a very lengthy position statement that really would give potential candidates an idea about the position, everything from like open space to economic development to stats about our town. So this would this would be the posting that would be out there for everyone to see that would hopefully entice them to come here. Any comments, feedback? If it hasn't already, I know that some people have probably already said it along, but anything on the position statement first?
I mean, I don't know where I'd put it, but, and, you know, I sent some feedback to Sharon and, like you said, a lot of it was incorporated, you know, whether it was good or bad, it was either incorporated or it wasn't changed, you know, and I could explain that. But I think one of the real assets of Foxborough, it's really a distinguishing thing, is world-class healthcare right in Foxborough. There is nothing that exists like Foxborough in terms of healthcare between Boston and Providence. This is the place. And I think like the new Dana Faba site, they're just just cancer care in your community. Now, how much is this the responsibility of the town manager, you know, at the end of the day? Well, the relationships are critically important. There's always things going on. I've even seen it since I started, you know, we've been there, you know, between the town and the crafts and, you know, the people that run the stadium there, and they're always looking at other things to expand. And so I do think that is unique, but I do think you you addressed it, I think, later on.
Yes, I added that.
But I just, for the group, I saw that as something that, because I'm new here, I can see that, maybe that people that have been here 20 years, because they've been here 20 years, you know, they kind of take it for granted a little bit, but you can't get healthcare like this anywhere, you know, except in Boston and some parts of Providence.
If I could, if I could just respond to that, because I think it ties into some other aspects that we'll probably get into. I think that, I agree completely, and I think, Dennis, you and I had the opportunity when we were when we were speaking about what was the position going into this, I gave you my, a little bit of my background, when I was city manager in Lowell. I had a very close relationship, working relationship with the healthcare providers, the hospitals, as well as the Community Health Center and the Health Alliance that we established for the for the region. And you hit upon the word that I think is crucial for what, I think, you know, you're, again, you're the you're the decision makers that have to to choose this candidate. It's really the ability to work through the relationships. You have what what makes, as the chair pointed out, what makes Foxborough particularly unique is the stadium, but I would expand that to the Route 1 corridor, which has the health care facilities, that has the retail sector, that has the stadium. There's a lot going on there that's very dependent upon someone that knows how to work relationships and sit at the table with major players.
Down to mom and pop, you know.
Right.
Town businesses and Forbes Cross.
Exactly, exactly. It has to be able to walk that. So that's that takes, that's a skill set that comes, I would say, with experience that that makes it important that you have someone that has the appropriate level of experience. This this isn't a position for the for the person just cutting their teeth.
Any other comments? No? No? Okay. All right, so after that, so I think we're good on on the position statement besides the gaping hole of the salary range.
We can just leave the X's if you want.
So, we haven't seen the data that you have there, so do you guys want to move to that? And then we can kind of end on next steps, I'm thinking. I believe you guys have been in touch with the screening committee and, you know, just, you know, kind of, everyone's everyone's eager for next step, so we'll we'll go to this and then. And I think this is the kind of thing, we could probably spend 10 meetings, you know, debating this. But for right now, we're looking to get, you know, to a salary that, or a band, we'll call it, that, you know, really attracts the right people, makes the position something that people, you know, want to come to and stay to. So I asked Bernie, you know, I think we're we're big on, I'm sure you bring this to all of them, but we're really big on the benchmarking and the data and all that. So I did ask him to kind of come with what he thought was maybe a recommendation for us to react to, but I don't know if we want to take a moment. Do you want to just walk us through this since we haven't seen this yet?
Sure. And, you know, we do provide this assistance to almost every community. And they, some just say, give us a number, or or we know what we want to pay or whatever. This is a bit more comprehensive than we have otherwise done, because we know that it's a it's a major issue that you want to take, take on and consider. So, but as I pointed out, we we broke this down into two categories. Those are the neighboring or nearby communities. We provided you with the population of those communities. And of course, population only tells part of the story. And Foxborough is the classic example of that. You're an 18,000 population, but a complex set of relationships that that I spoke of. But you can see that we're in the areas around you, you know. Now, there are some that that jump out to to me that, you know, and I'm happy to to jump out and tell you about those or to let you sort of ask questions that sort of goes around that. For example, the town of Easton, you can see that they're a population of 25,000 with a salary of 176. Their manager, their administrator, this was his first time out, there was a hometown sort of welcome in the door, here's the position. They have recognized that they have someone there that they want to now hold on to, and he's on a very fast track, once you add in everything. He's getting, right now, I think it's 3% increases every six months.
Okay.
Okay, that he's, so he's moving up quickly. And they signed him on for a five-year contract. As you go down further, North Attleboro is the other one that jumps out at me. Again, this was a first-time manager, he'd been the, we actually did this search as well. This one, he'd been a DPW Commissioner in Providence, as well as held a couple of other positions in Providence. A municipal's career of roughly seven years, but always in a department head-level position, had never been a manager. And so they moved him up. His contract is now expiring, will be coming up.
Yeah, and Rantham sticks out to me, too, on the low end.
Exactly. That one's a little bit different because there's some other hats that he wears in Rantham, and he's compensated for those.
Okay.
Okay, so health, emergency management, and then other negotiations are sort of put into the mix. Then below, what was, so, you know, I I haven't really, I have a recommendation for you when this is all said and done, but I'll get to that.
Can you, just staying on the top, can you talk to us about some of the higher-end ones, too?
Sure.
At least for me, that might be helpful, just to kind of see where like the the high and the low with the.
It's a pretty tight band.
It is a pretty tight band. That's why I'm curious, kind of the contacts he can give us to like the high, are those the more experienced people? Like, what what's the the higher ones, especially like, I'm looking at the ones that I think are a little closer to us, like, you know, taking Needham, I'd take Needham out, but like, you know, Sharon, for example, is one.
Yeah, Fred's a Fred's a longtime manager. He's he's been in the business for for quite a while. And so that's his, and again, these are the base salaries are, you know, some people get 5% deferred comp, some people get 10% deferred comp, some don't get any deferred comp. So it sort of plays, you have to sort of play around with that a little bit. But yeah, Fred is a is a longtime manager. He's been in Sharon very successfully for the last number of years, had been in Wayland before that, and prior to that, he'd been from out of state.
Okay.
So he has that longtime experience. Walpole's one that, you know, right next door. In addition to this base salary, he also is a the hearing officer and receives a stipend for that. But again, he's been in the business for a good, long time as well. The Mansfield, of course, had been a mayor prior to going to Mansfield. I don't really have much to add on that. Canton's one that's might be a little off, actually. This is the outgoing manager, and I don't have the salary for the incoming manager. I was not able to get that for you, but this is what Charlie was making in Canton.
We seem, just as we're negotiating with, you know, our fire chief, our police chief, Canton seems to play, pay on the higher end. Every, almost each time we've we've looked at surrounding towns, Canton Falls, you know, so I think they they tend to pay a little bit higher.
They 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 may. I don't have salary information.
Yeah. I just feel like we always see them up around the top.
The band is tighter, though, than I, you know, kind of, it's kind of nice to see how it's tight, tighter, you know?
Any correlation of per capita income in these communities? Seems to be a little bit of that.
A little, a little.
Not enough to say.
Not enough to really jump out. You almost see that a little bit more in the, some of the salaries below, but up in this area, not really, not really. For, you know, you know, Needham in Midway, you know, Needham is per capita income, I would say, is substantially above where Midway is. And if there's anyone watching from Midway, I don't know that for a fact, but, so, but that's my my guess. So, yeah, but I I think it's that's the point, it is a very tight band in that area.
And then we have another section that's current searches.
Current searches, current and recent, right. And again, I, you know, I want to be, I want to be, I want to give you all the information I have, but I don't want it to seem like I'm cherry picking it all. But for instance, the very first one, Bourne, 170, they they were very, you know, and I was actually speaking with a board member from Bourne today, they're just thrilled. She's been in place now for almost a year, and she'd been the assistant in Plymouth, so this was her first time as a as an administrator. She lives in Plymouth, and in that region, there's Plymouth, and you can see the salary that's there, and there's Bourne. And after that, you have to go over the bridge, or you have to come up an hour away to get that type of salary. So, you know, that was a great sort of find for her and a great find for them, that they had someone experienced right next door. Otherwise, that one probably, you know, I had a number of people that were looking at that, but they said it just wasn't worth the the salary at that level.
You don't want to detract people either, you know?
Right, so they they said it just wasn't enough, if you get the salary up, that they would consider applying. And so they had, you know, their field of candidates was a bit smaller than we like to see. Interestingly, Plymouth had a similar issue, and you can see where where they are. It's a very large community.
I didn't realize they were that big.
Yeah, and they end up going much above what they what they advertised.
Yeah, they they're they're a they're a large, they're a large in terms of population, much larger than most people know.
Largest in the area, too, right?
They're the, they, it's between Brookline and Plymouth as to who's larger in terms of population. But Plymouth is the largest geographic.
Right.
Over 100 square miles. And they have, you know, working harbor, an airport, you know, there's a lot going on.
Nuclear plan?
Nuclear plan.
Let's not forget that.
All sorts of stuff. They just signed their manager, jumping down to Plymouth for a second, they just signed their manager on to, he's he's scheduled under the contract that was negotiated, again, it's been about a year now, coming up on a year. Gave him a three-year contract, he was going to be in the mid to high 240s by the third year. They just extended it by three years. So he's out till 2027 now, and he will cap out at a salary of about 285 to 290,000 dollars. Foxborough, you can see that, and I, you know, I I recognize the the situation there. That came in less, but the contract is structured in such a way that there are bonus, there's bonus money put in there that brings one up to that salary, that 180. bonus money put in there that brings one up to that salary, that one-eighty. And Brookline, it's a, you know, another large community. It's a weaker position than you have here, and there's, the candidate they chose is, has never been a manager. He's, he's actually ran an office in the New York City government, so he had a small piece of municipal government that he was responsible for. Quite a bit of responsibility, was responsible for billions of dollars, has everything in New York is, but has never worked, other than that, has not worked as a town administrator. So this was a, and they had, they had a tight field. They, they had three candidates at the end, none of whom had been town administrators, and they, and, and they ended up with two finalists, because one candidate withdrew. So.
Okay.
Okay? And then you have some smaller communities, you can see here, like Carlisle, and Lancaster, and what they're, they're paying out at. But then I would drop down, and I'm happy to speak to any of these that you wish, that you wish to speak to. But then you drop down into Middleborough, which is making their decision tonight, a little bit larger than, than you are here in Foxborough. Again, that was, that's one of those ones, it's down in that Plymouth-Bourne area. But, and you can see that they, they're in line, it's pretty much what, what Bourne is, is doing. Stoughton is out in the market right now, they have their finalists, looking at two-ten plus or minus. Sudbury, we just closed that the other day, they have a number of candidates that were, we have a good, strong field there, roughly the same population, not the same level of complexity. But, you know, that's literally who I was just on with, and we, you know, we have very good candidates for them, but, you know, some of whom, their backgrounds would be perfect for Foxborough, but again, geography, we're all north of the Mass Pike. In fact, they're up above that, really, so, becoming south. So, yeah, that's, that's where we, yeah. Westford just went on the market last week at that two-ten, two-thirty, which is a pretty good number.
So, any questions on this before we ask Bernie what he thinks RBN should be? Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so Bernie, as far as we talked, you mentioned deferred compensation. So, thinking about the total benefits package, and the cost, and the other incremental costs on top of a salary like this, I just wanted to get your thoughts there.
Again, I think that that gets more into when you get into negotiations. Some people like a car, some people like a car allowance, some people would rather have it in their salary. I would say that everything that you have here, you probably, most, let's say, most of the people here probably are somewhere in the vicinity of eight percent.
Plus.
Is what a number I'm going to put out there.
For like, car, and phone, and life insurance, whatever it may be.
Whatever it might be. Deferred comp. There are some, there are some here that have deferred comp of ten percent. But I would say, on average, it's a bit below that, but then when you put everything else in, you'd get yourself up to about that eight or so percent.
Where are we at now for, for that?
I don't think we have deferred comp in bills, do we?
We don't.
We don't, yeah, we don't.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
I'll be honest with you, I'm just speaking for myself, because we, with other contracts, we'd start, I myself don't care for the deferred compensation. I feel like we come up with a salary, it's your job to how you want to invest your money, whatever you want to do with it. I would rather be, just be an all-in, I mean, not, not meaning car or phone and stuff like that, just, just my opinion.
Yeah.
I guess the other question I have for you, do you like to post a job? I, I know part of, when we discussed, we talked about, you know, I, we talked about the salary a little bit.
Right.
And, you know, I said, sometimes, you said, sometimes you just find a diamond in the rough, you know? Sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not, you know? And do you like posting an advertised salary, kind of, like, like Bourne has, one-seventy-plus? Now, so if someone came in.
Plus or minus.
Yes.
Or minus.
Yeah, see those both.
Yeah. Do you, do you like a posting like that, where, so you might be able to attract that diamond in the rough, but yet, the plus will, will be there if somebody comes in with a ton of experience, I mean, or, or do you prefer, like, the two-hundred to two-twenty? Like, like an actual, an actual band? Like, you know, do, you know, just, I'm just curious what you, what your thought is on that.
Yeah, we, we actually, we've sort of patented this, I'm sure other people have done it, too. But I, I notice now, a number of the other firms that are doing this have moved to what we've been doing from the beginning, the plus or minus.
Because then you're not committed to a band.
Well, you're not, you're not committed, if you say, my sense is, if you put a band in, some of your candidates are going to say, they don't deserve it, if they're going to say, I want the top. And then you run into problems. Or if they're, or if they're good, but they're convinced that the community is going to lowball, that the range is there, that they can start at the beginning and move their way up, and say, it's not worth my while.
Yeah.
I like the, the, sort of the mid-range point that says, you're coming in, so, so if you look, and you say, okay, for instance, I'll give you an example, it's Redding, two-hundred-thousand plus or minus. Again, they found a diamond in the rough. They hired the DPW commissioner from Chelsea. He'd never been a manager before, and they were able to get him for a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. They are head over heels with this guy. They just think that he is, he's outstanding. People of the community are thrilled, the board, you know, indicated, it was one of the first unanimous votes that they all had, that, because they, they all rallied around him, and he's, so you find him. Now, same time, you have a Plymouth, where you said, okay, we, this guy is really good, and he's obviously proven himself to be very good in tackling some major issues that Plymouth has, so they were willing to, to come up on that. But it, it really, it gives you that mid-range point that says, okay, we can do something for you here, in the, you know, if you need, if we get that stellar candidate, if you get the person who's the diamond in the rough that, like, North Attleboro. He'd never done it before, they went out on a limb, they chose him over a candidate that had extensive experience, and they're now in a position where they can, you know, keep him on. So, I like, I like that approach.
Yeah, because I'm always the, I'm always the one, from my time on advisory committee, to my time on this board.
Yeah.
Where I'm always a little more conscious of what the salaries are, and, and, but I feel like this position, not that I'm not going to go on a limb, say, then I'm like, yeah, the sky's the limit, right? But I, I do realize this is the big position here, and that we need somebody who's going to run out of town well. So I kind of feel like, for this position, I am a little bit more, like, I would love us to see that, that range, where if the diamond in the rough did show up to us, that maybe we could pay one-eighty-five. But if it was somebody with, you know, I mean, Bill came to us with lots of years' experience, and so if someone comes around like that, I feel like, I feel like I'm a little bit more willing to go to that higher, higher number, you know? I'd like to see us to be able to, be able to hit both.
Right.
Of course, with your recommendation, because that's why we, that's why we hired you, because you, you know, you know, better than me anyhow, I don't, not to speak for anybody else, but than me, where, where it is, but, I mean, I, for one, kind of like that little plus or minus.
The other part that we like is that people that I'm focusing on, it, it helps, it gives the board flexibility, it gives the town flexibility. But at the same time, it gives us a number that we can put out there that can attract candidates. If you, if you put, if you, if you're putting in a range, like, I, I don't know what's going to happen in, you know, a Wayland, for instance, but it, it's, there's too many questions there to a candidate, and it doesn't really attract their attention.
Fifty-thousand-dollar range is a range.
Much too large, much too large.
Yeah.
We did it, we did a totally off, different from this. We were working with a city that had very large ranges. They, I think they had, some positions that they were filling, they had starting salaries of eighty-something thousand dollars with a maximum of a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. How do you ever? But they, they'd just never gotten around to changing their, you know, eliminating those bottom steps, so. So, you know, for, for me, I would recommend that you look at a range of, like, two-oh-five to two-ten, plus or minus, and acknowledging that you, you know, if a really good one comes in, you're going to have to go up a little bit above, but it gives you the opportunity to do something down below if you get the right candidate.
Yeah, I think it's, it's obviously really important to be responsible to the taxpayers, but we need to make sure that, you know, we attract the right people to this job, and we want to make sure we have a good pool as well.
It, you know, and I think I talked about this when I was in last time to meet with you, and I'm, I'm sure I've, because I talk about it everywhere. It's just been such a tough market for managers over the last number of years, because so many have left the business. Two-thirds, over, two-thirds of the communities now have lost managers in the last five years of turnover. And, you know, many, most are retiring, so, and there isn't necessarily the pipeline coming up behind. And we see this in so many different sectors, but in the municipal sector, we see it in managers, we see it in finance people, we see it in public works, really everywhere, but managers, I have those numbers, it's two-thirds, and it's, makes it very challenging. Yep, yep.
All right, any concerns about that, the recommendation? Otherwise, I think we're, we're good to get this thing out into the market.
So I guess the question is, you want two-oh-five, or you want two-ten?
Two-oh-five.
You know why the two-oh-five is sticking out to me? I don't know if this makes any sense, but, I mean, Dedham is paying two-oh-five. You know, our, our town manager came from Dedham here, almost went back to Dedham. I kind of feel like maybe, you know, I'm not going to speak for Bill, by no means, but maybe, you know, while we're different communities, you know, they have a little more people, we have the stadium, they have a lot going on in Dedham, too, as far as business, and, you know, and of course, legacy place, and, and stuff like that. And I'm just seeing that they are paying two-oh-five, so, so maybe that number's sticking in my head a little bit for those reasons. I don't know if that makes any sense with you guys, or, you know?
Some of the other ones are out there, though, like Stoughton's out at two-ten, Sudbury we're probably not competing with. I mean, it's five thousand dollars, so I'm not that.
You've got, you've got some that you could, there will be some that, but most of the, most of the people in Sudbury are coming north.
My, my thought with the two-oh-five is, yeah, it's sort of putting out there that, that, that two-hundred.
Yeah.
It's north of two, yeah.
It's north of two, but yet if we get that diamond in the rough, maybe one-ninety-five, you know, isn't out of the question, but at the same time, if we get that phenomenal candidate, you know, that's where we can go, the two-ten.
Yeah, we all good with two-oh-five?
I don't think that's going to cut it for, so in the position statement, we talk about experience, and so, the experience, the people with experience are, they're not going to come down to two-oh-five if they're at two-ten, two-fifteen.
We are going to have the plus, though.
And the minus. Yeah, I mean, my gut would be just do the two-ten versus the two-oh-five, personally.
Yeah.
Dennis, where are you at? You're like the tiebreaker.
No pressure.
See, again, you know, I can live with the two-oh-five, because I think we have a long way to go here. And we keep talking about experience, but experience doesn't mean the number of years you've been on the job. Experience means specifically, what do we want as experience, and how do we prioritize that? So I think if we see, to me, if we see a diamond in the rough, it hits all of the key points in terms of must for experience as, as baseline. Like I said, you know, collective bargaining, union, managing a union environment, particularly with Michael leaving, that's a must, you know, that people have that experience, you know? So, you know, I think the number, you know, you got, you got to put something out there, I'm fine with two-oh-five, but I think the quality of the candidate is going to dictate where we end up going with that.
Yeah, I mean, I can live with two-oh-five, like, you know?
Because Doc, with, like, my first gut was the two-hundred plus, and then I thought to myself, exactly what you said, there's that little bit of perception, you just come a little bit higher, then maybe a candidate thinks, okay, there's even that five-thousand-dollar window that the plus might be five thousand more than, you know, I, I don't.
I mean, sort of to, again, it's, I think, when we put the plus-minus in, it gives you the opportunity to go, if you find that diamond in the rough, to go to one-ninety-five. But also gives you the opportunity, if you find someone that's, to, to really attract. What you're going to be attracting is the candidates that are probably making, you're not going, you're not going to take any of these people, probably, steal any of these, you might, there's a couple in here, maybe you, but generally speaking, you're, you're going to be taking people that are going to be making one-eighty, one-ninety, and they're going to want a twenty percent to make the move. So they're going to be up around, so, but it gives you that flexibility. I just want to be sure that we all understand that, whatever number we put out there, two-oh-five or two-ten, if you get a really good, experienced person.
We may be going north.
You're going to go north.
Yeah.
You just have to, and I need to be able to say that to candidates.
No, but I think we understand that.
Yeah, you can need to be able to go north, and you need to be able to assault, depending on the person, yep.
Okay, as long as we all.
We're getting rid of the X's. We're getting rid of the X's in the, uh.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
So we're now, we're now complete, then?
No one knew what I was talking about.
I wasn't, so I just said, I thought maybe Bernie would pick it up.
They both looked at me like, I like, what the hell's he talking about?
Strange things, this is uptown, right?
Yeah.
Uptown.
We, you are uptown right now, yep.
That's right.
Yep. So with that, tell us a little bit about what to expect from here, timeline, I know we all have it.
True.
In, in our presentation, but just for everyone out there, just remind us what's next.
Yeah, what's next is, as I said at the outset, we'll probably post this tomorrow, maybe not tonight, but we'll post it tomorrow, and I'll, I can predict you now, the first resume will come in tomorrow, I'll even tell you who it'll be. But, and then.
Will it be somebody we like?
But he applies all the time. So, and then, we haven't set a date yet on the, another X, see, another X in here, the date of when they will be due back, but you can count on pretty much four weeks from now.
Yeah, I think we'd look to you for whatever the norm is.
It'll be about roughly four weeks.
It keeps us roughly in our timeline.
We'll, we'll, we'll play with the date to have it be something that makes sense. And then, once we do that, I'll work off of that to get in touch with the screening committee, ask them when they would like to meet to review all the resumes, you know, starting a few days after the deadline, that then, that will give me a chance to review all the resumes, and then we'll all talk with, you know, each other and figure, okay, which ones are in the yes pile, which ones are in the no piles, and which ones fall in between. And then we'll sit down with the screening committee, go over those resumes, go over our rationale for where we put them in the batches, and start to think about when we can meet to do the interviews. You know, I expect that the interviews will probably, depending upon the availability of the committee, maybe doing it over the course of a whole day, or maybe over two half-days. And then from that, and so that will probably be, if today is, that will probably be in the beginning of December, and then we'll spend some time in December talking to the references of those people. We do preliminary background checks before they even get to us, well, I should say before they get to us, but before they give it to, give it to the screening committee.
That was as bad as my access.
Yeah, I know. Well, sometimes we do it before they get to us.
We already know who number one's going to be.
Who we want to, who we want to advertise, to apply. But no, before we get to the screening committee, we'll know something about all of their backgrounds. Most of them we already know, just by being in the business. But we'll, we'll meet with the committee, and we'll, they'll interview, they'll select the finalists that will be brought to the board, but we'll do the background checks at that point, so that you will have a document in front of you when you do your interviews, probably in January, early January, that tells you a little bit about the candidate other than what's on the resume. So, for instance, we'll tell you that a candidate, you know, has So for instance, we'll tell you that a candidate, you know, has worked on a particular type of project or, you know, encountered a difficult situation that their experience allowed them to solve that problem. Tell you a little bit about their decision-making, a little bit about their style, so that when you interview the candidates, you'll have the, that information at hand so you can focus in on questions you may have about that particular issue or problem that they've worked on. So, so we'll probably be back to see you in early January.
Okay.
I would think.
Great.
Something like that.
And I did, I am out of the country for one week in January and I did give them those dates too.
You did.
Just to complicate things. I hope that doesn't change between now and then, but.
Yeah.
Kind of right in the middle of the month.
Yeah, so we'll.
I'm hearing it's Chinese New Year then though, so those dates might shift, so I'll try to mail those down.
All right, we'll, we'll work around that, but we'll, you know, our expectation is that you'll be making, doing your interviews and making a decision by the end of January.
Yeah, great, right on target.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then obviously you'll, you'll take them there with the negotiations and we'll, we're there to assist with that as well.
And have you already made contact with everyone on the screening committee?
Uh, we've emailed all of them.
Okay, okay.
Uh, but we, I haven't asked for anything back.
Okay, but everyone, you know, yeah, everyone's at least knows what's coming.
I'm assuming everybody received it.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
All right, great. And then the community survey is still open until?
I think it's the twentieth.
Yeah, I think it was the twenty-something, okay.
We had, well, when I left today, there were ninety-six responses so far.
Okay, great. That's a good response, right? Are you happy with that compared to other, yeah?
Yeah, I wanna get it over that hundred mark.
Yeah.
So if you haven't done it.
Okay.
Just gonna say, I'll go home and do mine.
All right, great. Great, fabulous.
All right.
Thanks so much. I know you guys had a busy night, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we only have selectmen's update to get through, yes?
I have one other thing to report.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, of course.
So, on the citizen town manager update, just two town property approvals that.
Oh, yeah, wrote those down.
Bill has signed off. So Lyons Bottle and Can Drive, which will be here at Town Hall, was approved for October twenty-second and that's from nine to noon. And then he's also approved the Recreation Department for the Light Up the Town, which is the lighting of the common on November twenty-sixth and that's from four to seven, so those two approvals.
Yeah, and just for everyone to know that we, we, you know, with this online permitting, it was a little bit easier for them to go through and we had a couple clashes that someone let us know about. So now we do have like a physical calendar, just with rain dates and stuff, making sure the commons, you know, not double booked, so just that everyone knows we're, we're being conscious of that and aware of that, so. Start saving your cans, I know for that can drive on the twenty-second that's coming up, so that's, that's a good one to know about. All right, great, so, selectmen's update, we have a couple things that you've probably heard or seen. The Foxborough Fire Open House is November fifteenth from eleven to two at the Public Safety Building. Drug Takeback Day, also at the Safety Building is the twenty-ninth from nine to one, they take prescription medication, veterinary medication and sharps, I know people have trouble getting rid of those sometimes. The compost site's closing for the season on December third and it's not on here, but the J.C.'s Autumn Craft and, Craft and Vendor Fair is Saturday, October fifteenth, so that's coming up as well. And then under Old Business, just the hydrant flushing, I'm sure everyone's seen that. If you actually watch the post that Christina did, it's like a little video, you have to kind of stay on it to see and it does zoom in on the streets, so, don't scroll by it too fast, so you'll miss that. Anyone else have anything?
I have one quick thing, just wanna, I don't know if everybody knows or if anybody knows, Condoleezza's out to Superintendent Burdoh's, lost her mom on Friday night, eighty-one years old, Dr. Janelle Ashley, and why I just wanted to mention it too is, Ryanne not only, Ryanne told Jimmy and I because her mom was the first woman, first female president at Worcester State University, so Ryanne got a, a big email that, or text that went out to all the kids, just letting them know, because it was, it's kind of a big deal for them and I guess as a woman, Ryanne like, you know, was kind of like, you know, some of the girls, they really look up to her as being the first. And just a little information, not only was she the first female president at Worcester State, but she was the first woman to get her master's degree from North Texas State University as well as her doctorate, doctorate degree there.
Oh, wow, impressive.
So a, a pretty, I mean, obviously never had the opportunity to meet her, but I've heard a lot about her through Ryanne, through Worcester State and of course, the little connection we have with Superintendent Burdoh's being right here, so just thoughts and prayers out to Amy and her whole family at the loss of her mom, so.
I saw your hands up behind you.
Yep, thanks, thanks Leah. So, last week we had, at our meeting, we voted on Chief Grace's contract, that was a split vote that passed. I feel like if we maybe spent a little bit more time on it, we might have gotten to a point where we had a, a five-zero vote, but the vote is what it is and I think there was, most of that conversation was financial. So that went by without a lot of fanfare or additional discussion because it was in closed session. And so what I just wanted to do was, at this point, express my support for Chief Grace, for the Foxborough Police Department, full support of the work that they're doing for the accreditation. Last week they talked about the, the support for domestic sexual violence and so I just wanted to, to make sure that it was understood that I, that I support Chief Grace, like, and the department and all the work that they're doing to, to move forward and really, the work that they do is important and I just wanted to make that explicit and have that on the record, so.
Yeah, that we're all, we're all unified in support.
Yeah, and actually, Seth, I'm so glad that you said it because unfortunately, it was two weeks ago, I've had a couple of crazy weeks, lost stuff going on and I, thank you for saying it because it was on my mind that I wanted to touch base with you and just say exactly what you said. I, I had a conversation with Chief Grace and, you know, of, of course, everyone knows, I'm always gonna vote what I feel in my heart and my head is the right way and I didn't think of the perception that people watching might have thought that we did not support Chief Grace and so, thank you Seth, because I forgot that I wanted to say something myself. And, yeah, I, I told him that, not only happy that he's our chief, I'm proud that he's our chief and by no means was my vote, as well as Seth's vote, as he said, have anything to do with any support for him or his department. So, thanks, thanks for remembering Seth because I forgot that I wanted to pretty much say the same thing. It was for different reasons why we didn't vote, why our votes went away and it's not really fair to him or his department for the perception that someone might have thought there was another reason why we didn't vote on his contract, so everything Seth said is pretty much ditto for me.
Well said Seth.
Thanks.
All right, great. And, you know, I think I'd be remiss not to mention too, back in September, I had asked both chiefs, I, you know, I've been a selectman for five years and I've really never seen like the internal police and fire operation, so I asked for all this kind of before the contract has been in the works for a while, but on Sunday, I actually reported to the police station at eight forty-five in the morning and I went through, like, a day with police and fire and like roll call and even seeing like, like stuff that was eye-opening to me, like, like Lee is down there for like twelve hours a day processing people that are coming from other towns to work, like, how can we help their, how can we help her, all the work that goes into that, it really is amazing. So I just wanted to make sure to mention, both on police and fire, you know, just how eye-opening it was, you know, usually when we're there for a ceremony, I'm there quick and then back to my seat and kind of never see anything else, so it was, it was really eye-opening and it is a lot of work that both departments do that goes into that game day and then of course, I had them walk me through. I actually saw the, the automatic foray machines too in person, just so I could tell you guys we're all here at the table, it was very uneventful. The, the gentleman was actually there from the company that, that sells them and he walked me through the whole process and I felt great about it and it was, you could walk by it and, and kind of miss it, there was no, no crazy lines, no, no buildup, no backup, so.
I was hoping you were gonna give us a little update on your tour.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was really, it was a great, great day. I think we're out of there by like, by the time the game started, I think we're out of there by like one thirty, we were really, you know, just there to kind of see, see everything that goes into the beforehand, so. All right, great, with that, anything else before we adjourn?
Nope.
All right, if you can get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right, great, thanks everyone, have a good night, we'll see you in two weeks.